That's all right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Constitution of the Republic for which it stands, one edition under the bill, under the visible with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right, well, let's call a meeting to order. Motion to approve the agenda.
Anything to add to it?
Nothing at all.
I have nothing. Anybody else got anything?
Okay, motion to approve this agenda. First and second, all in favor? Aye.
Motion carries. Approve the message February twenty-second. I was hoping Sandy was gonna say she rested room, because quite honestly, I did not.
Were they mailed out? Because I didn't see them if they were.
I didn't either.
No, they just were done yesterday.
Okay.
I sent you an email. Did you get it, Sandy?
Did you?
Last night with everything.
Well, the one thing, uh, for the thing that's on this, Bruce voted me. That needs to be corrected.
Okay.
The only one that I noticed. Is that correct, Bruce?
Correct. Looks good. I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that. Okay, we have first, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. General public concerns. Nobody on Skype the way it looks. Nobody up here. So I think we'll move on to you, Randy.
Good. Uh, as you may recall, last Monday, it came in in the work session. We discussed a situation with a violation of the building permits and possible penalty. We left it that I would come back today. I sent a text message to each of you with the, uh, contact text of the letter that I had written. Hopefully, everybody got that. And the reason I did that is being a personal letter. I thought it would probably be best if everybody looked at it previously. Uh, so I did get one response back from Bruce. He had a very exciting point that I had not thought about was, uh, how our county attorney looked at the letter. And, uh, so in retrospect of that, um, the problem, one of the problems is in the ordinance, there's not a real specific language of who enforces the penalty. It simply says that the jurisdiction over the whole ordinance is, of course, the board supervisors. But there's no specific indication of who actually enforces penalties, whatever the board would decide. And so, uh, I tried to contact our county attorney, left a message, have not heard back yet. So where I see it is, I think there's two or three options that we table this until, uh, I have been able to, uh, contact the county attorney. Or, uh, you could go ahead and approve the way it is. Or you could approve it in contingent that the county attorney okayed it. Uh, or, excuse me, or have the county attorney rewrite the letter and have it come from him.
Well, on that note, if he would ever get back to you and look at what you sent him as you proposed it. And he said, "That's fine," or he wants to rewrite it, but either way, Bruce's comment, having looked at it, he says, "Oh, this is perfect and fine," and said, "Go ahead with it."
I just didn't know whether or not it should come from me or it should come actually from the county attorney.
Or from the board supervisors.
Or the board supervisors.
Yeah.
Really like it.
Basically, the rest, the part of it that says, I mean, let's say, for example, that somebody was decided not to comply at all. It's obviously going to be then, under the jurisdiction of the county attorney, to enforce that. So I didn't know whether or not this should also be written by them on their stationery or whatever it might be. And so, uh, I apologize. I never thought about that. So I'm glad Bruce brought it up. He's, he's a lot smarter than I am.
No.
That's why we pay it more.
I just stumbled through the letter and I thought, "Well, rather than throw a rock at a hornet's nest here, why don't we get, uh, him upstairs to at least look at it and give us his thoughts?"
Would be fair, picking through Randy's options, that he already requested him to take a look at it and now he came up with a couple other questions. So, uh, if he would get a chance to review it, look exactly who it's coming from, make that decision. And once that's all squared away for our discussion about it, go ahead and move forward with it. I don't think we need to table it. I think we just, you get your answer or answers, go ahead and move forward. Is that fair with it?
I would make sure that, and I would send this with, with it, uh, the portion on violations, Article seventeen, for him to review what it exactly says, so he has that right in front of him as he looks at what has been written.
Yep.
So that would, that would give him, you know, a little more reference to go back to, to say, "Does this meet that standard then?" And then if he decides, "We'd probably better redo this," you know, I, I feel we should table.
I have no problem with the options.
Do you do?
You think so? That's why I thought, there's way too many options if we don't have a clue where he's gonna go with it. The county attorney might put something entirely different.
It would be nice to, uh, get a response back from him and get these questions answered.
Yeah, and the other thing too is, at least since I've been doing this, I don't recall that we've, you know, done a penalty. And so, we haven't been done since I've been.
What do you think, supervisor?
We don't want to set a precedent that is not, is not correct.
Yeah.
So, thank you for listening.
You think if you can get this, questions answered and things looked over in a week and we table it for?
We shouldn't be able to. I, I left a message, but I haven't heard back.
Right.
I'll call again today.
The thing is, we are, we are getting a building permit to rebuild the Twin Towers for, this is something that's really pretty minor.
Right.
But yet, we need to make sure that we're calling, moving forward, we move forward correctly.
Well, you don't want to look back and say, uh, we should have done this or shouldn't. At least we could look forward and say, "We did everything we could possibly do."
Exactly.
To make this correct, not just for this one instance, but for possible situations in the future.
I agree. I think, I think let's just say.
We're setting a set of steps that we're gonna follow in the future, so. Right, and in revision, maybe down the road, I presented to the joint meeting of the Board of Adjustments and zoning board, uh, was last Thursday, and I put in there a suggestion of maybe how that language could be changed to make it a little bit, a little bit better, to give a more of a step-by-step procedure, because the language is pretty vague.
Well, I'm clear. Do you need a motion to table this?
Yep.
I would make, I would make a motion to table this pending further information that was discussed and gathering all that information. So hopefully, we can get this back, uh, within, with, with the clarification, with the information.
Right.
I agree. I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second.
I think it ought, the latter ought to come from Gons.
Well.
Okay, I have a motion to table this, so hopefully, one week from today.
Hopefully.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Randy, for working with us.
Yeah, thanks for getting the clarification. Thanks, Bruce.
No.
He's smarter than me. Of course, I taught him everything he enjoys.
He was a stellar student.
There you go.
He's a model student.
Don't put any of that paper, I'll be hearing nothing, but.
Model student.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Well, unfortunately, none of these other things can be done, I don't believe.
We can sit here and, can we?
I don't know if we, can we do that ahead of time?
Well, I have a question anyway.
Wait, yes.
And on the bottom of the agenda?
Yes.
It's an agenda discussion.
Yes.
What's that about?
I visited the church on Friday afternoon, and we still had, the agenda wasn't out. So before, we always had, they, that our office had the ability to say, "By Thursday, or whatever the cutoff time is, all your stuff needs to be in. If you want something on the agenda," because this makes it easier for them, it makes it easier for us. So I said, "Well, we just need to discuss if we need to put a timeframe, so."
My knowledge, which sometimes it's limited, but in regards to that, I was always told, "Thursday at noon, you have your information to the auditor to put on the agenda, and if you don't, it's the following week." I had people, we probably all had people ask about something.
Yeah, I always tell them Thursday at noon.
And so, for the past number of years, that's what I told them, and I said, "Yep, you, you sure could put that on the agenda." But I said, "The deadline is Thursday at noon, and if not, then if you can't get your information together, it'll be the following week."
Yeah.
So we just need to make that a known again, so that everybody is on the same page, because we still have this ability to, "Well, Friday morning, no."
Friday, how to do it. "Oh, hey, I was gonna do this yesterday."
So I just take, throw it on there, so we can get it done.
I think that's a plan. We need to get this reinforced.
Basically, what we've done, it just needs to be, I mean, we've had a couple things, probably only a couple, that might be closer to an emergency or expedient.
Something that has a deadline to meet.
Expedient that came up after that, that was. But normally, most people stop it late a week if they're getting it turned in.
People who are stuck together.
This is what we've been doing.
And the agenda at that time, if there's something that comes up, can, you know, we can just, like we use, you know, is there any to be amended? So we could just put that on in the agenda.
Yep. If it's something that has a deadline, it has to meet.
But just, but then again, people roll the deadlines, and the deadline for the agenda publication is noon Thursday.
So does that work for the auditor's office then? Is that what you and they are?
That was our hope anyway, was to keep it noon on Thursday, but then people.
Just that, once they're told and then realize they aren't on the agenda until the following week, non-emergency, they'll get it into your file.
Then we'll just keep it the way it was, noon on Thursday and.
Enforce it.
And there are no more unless we.
If it's an emergency, then it can be put on for Friday amended.
All right, we want to do committee reports.
I had, uh.
Who's cell phone got left here?
It was Donovan.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was Randy. Okay. Yeah, I hope I didn't shut it off.
No, it's all right.
Take a look at, make sure it's still running. Just seeing that.
On, uh, Tuesday, we had our ODMO Zoom meeting, um, all is written well there. Thursday, we have our CFR Zoom meeting, same. Friday, I end up, uh, going to Eldora for the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention. And we are in the process down there of deciding, I guess, decision has already pretty much been made. They hired a contractor, hired a architect, and, uh, they're adding on to that building, um, down there. Putting a pretty good-sized addition on there. And so, in the next few months, they're going to go through the building process again. Hopefully, in a little over a year, they're gonna have a building that will be able to house, uh, kids that, in December, uh, when the federal law changes and a juvenile is not able to be put in our jail or in Webster County Jail or wherever, then this, this facility will be able to hold, uh, those kids. So that's what they're building. Um, I also had a conversation with Rick Rasmussen, uh, down there, and have some information on that. And have another inquiry from another person that would be possibly interested in, um, a position, so.
Okay. Wednesday, um, twenty-fourth, I just had a committee meeting with my county social services. Um, they still have one twenty-six million dollars to use for mental health, um, for care of that money. And so I have been reaching out to, um, different tenants that, um, trying to get a home, things like that from libraries. It has, uh, anything that can be used for mental health, um, a lot, there's several libraries, um, within our region that have asked for money for E P, um, helping with, um, being able to get focused, their people to help with, um, people, you know, stress, things like that, trying to put in a program, uh, for that. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone's real, realizes that if there's anything that needs to be used that money for, um, to contact people, be able to, um, and she'll, um, help them if they have any questions or suggestions. Um, so I've been reaching out to, um, I guess, to contact, uh, but, uh, plus, uh, and then also, I mean, mental health, they got their, um, uh, monthly government, I think that's all I have.
That was on the twenty-fourth also?
Correct, the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Okay, on Monday, I was here for the assessors' budget hearing, twenty-second. And on Wednesday, had a Zoom meeting with Region Five Hazmat. And that was in the morning. In the afternoon, I had a Zoom meeting with Pathfinder's Midas. And, uh, Pathfinder's, they talked about, and they voted to raise the wages for bus drivers. Kick them up three bucks more to get them up to where people will be interested in driving a bus and be hired instead of having them way down. Uh, we're short on bus drivers in Fort Dodge. I think Humboldt is all right. Pocahontas needs one or two. And, uh, not sure how Rockwell City is over that way, but anyway, we raised the wages for bus drivers, three bucks an hour. Then on Thursday, I had a board of adjustment with Randy, and we went over the bylaws a little bit. And we need to rewrite that whole ordinance on the building permits and stuff. And, um, it says in there that we have to have a, uh, what's it? I got it here. Order's twenty-six on the zoning, and then we have to have a resolution on that and a comprehensive plan. And the complicated comprehensive plan is done in ninety-five. Uh, we need to get that up to date. And we talked about going through Pathfinder's down there and having Shirley get us new maps of the county. Uh, we're talking quite a bit of money to get that all done. We don't see how much we can get down on our own to go from there. And that's all I have.
Okay, uh, going back to last Monday, the twenty-second, um, at a building families meeting via Zoom that afternoon. And then the assessors' conference board meeting that evening. And that's what I had left.
Okay, uh, on the twenty-second, I was at the conference board meeting here in Corso. And then on Friday, I had a three-hour Zoom meeting with our insurance people. And, uh, they did pump up the Blue R X for picking up a few tier drugs, top four tier drugs. So that'll be, it was gonna be the first, first of July that that would be available. But I believe they said that as of first of April, it will come into effect at no change in our policy. So that is a good thing for people who need those certain drugs. Um, our, uh, looks like our rate is gonna be five point something, is the right page here? Five point three eight. She's, she's gonna visit with us about, we could adjust that one way or the other due to our self-funding. But that's a general ballpark area. Our self-funding did go down a little bit. I don't have that right, uh, she, there's so many pages to this thing. But our self-funding did go, our balance did go down a little bit. Last year, we, uh, took more out of that. So if we want to pad our self-funding a little bit more, we'd have to bump that five point three up a little bit.
So just left it, and didn't utilize any self-funding to lower it and just left it? You said it's approximately five point, that's a five point three percent increase, right?
Yeah.
Last year. And just left it alone, but that, that would.
That I.
Give a hell of the self-funding if we don't try to lower it?
Yeah, that would. It bumped it up, but, you know, she was telling me earlier that we were carrying a pretty hefty balance in our self-funding. We were like three hundred and some thousand. Now we're at two hundred and fifty-six.
Wow, what is it? Two fifty-six or two forty-six?
So she's gonna visit with us, uh, either by Zoom or she might come up, like she typically does.
Right.
So I think it's looking good though.
Well, last year, we were pretty healthy, and didn't she, we ended up using some, so then.
So our, it wasn't quite so much.
Yeah, wasn't, as Bruce mentioned, the, part of, keep it, wasn't the percent increase quite a bit larger a year ago?
I thought it was.
It's over in the, yeah, maybe nine. So wasn't, maybe some of the self-funding utilized to keep it at a lesser percent increase? And that's why maybe the self-funding got eaten up a little bit?
Yeah, it, uh, yeah. It was over a nine percent last year.
Right, it was true. So we utilized, keep it less than nine, use some of the self-funding to.
Yeah.
So I'm just suggesting, we can get the presentation that maybe just leave, if it comes in at five point three, leave it at five point three. Don't try to reduce it if there's any concern about it.
Keep our self-funding at a healthy level.
Right, keep it so it doesn't eat away anymore of it. Because five point three is a lot less than nine. So it's, it's quite a bit of a lesser increase year over year on the percentage, maybe not a fill. That's how it works.
Yeah, that's kind of what I can do, because I like to keep that self-funding up there. So when you do have a bad year, you can use it to soften the blow.
Some more to the quality. Here we did last year, so that, that would take a chunk. So we can add back to it by just going with whatever the increase is.
Yeah.
And not eating into the self-funding.
So overall, it looks, looks pretty good, I think.
We don't have anything goes up every year.
What's crazy, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it was like, the, the whole group pays like eight million dollars in premiums.
Yeah.
And then they, what they paid out in claims was within a thousand, some hundred dollars difference between the premiums and what they paid in claims.
Wow.
Yeah. It's, you know, it's amazing how bad we just save for gout. And we're fortunate this year, we didn't have any huge.
Kind of.
Yeah, well, last year, we had a couple of pre-born, pre, pre-me babysat costs like two million dollars.
Hey!
We didn't have any of those real huge claims like we did the previous year, so.
Are they still doing, uh, you know, I guess in this case, county by county? Where if you, like you just mentioned, the amount, number of claims?
Yeah.
Still based on the county's number of claims? Does that still factor into, you know, the better rates?
Yes.
If you keep your, your claims down in the county?
We do our part as a county, but it's the whole group is how they work with well, they work as a group.
Right.
But they do break it down county by county, and Humboldt County was also within a few thousand dollars of what we paid in premiums as to what we had in claims. So, you know, sometimes, they'll, there's a sheet in here somewhere that shows county by county.
Yeah.
Or city, but actually, the majority of the groups are cities.
Okay.
We did add Fort Dodge, Harden, the city of Fort Dodge, Harden County, and Duane Water Works to our group. So they picked up quite a few more people. And they are really careful. They scrutinized the group pretty hard before they take them on, so trying to help us out the most they can. But it's, uh, I mean, they, they got pages upon pages in here that tells you how much money was spent on, like, heart issues, arthritis, diabetes. It's all broke down into like twenty pages of the amount of money went to different problems. So they, they track it really good.
Well, like I said, this, uh, so you don't, per county or city or group, that is, you know, entity that's in the group, they, I know they, they got it broke down, but everybody's amount of claim.
Yeah, well, if somebody's having a lot of claims, they go and talk to them, saying, "What's going on here? Why, why is your county like at two hundred percent?"
Yeah.
Or your, your claims are way higher than your premiums, sorry.
You get, does anybody get any, uh?
Discounts.
Discount, if you have less. Lesser amount? You know, like if you're on the low end of the claims?
No.
They'll vary. I think I remember looking at the chart. It went from fifty-four percent up to two hundred and twenty-seven percent. So, you know, it only takes one person to have a real bad illness in your, your employment to jump you up. So.
Yeah.
So the thing is, stay healthy.
Yeah.
But she will be calling to set up a appointment. She was glad to meet face-to-face or via, whatever we want to do.
Okay.
I need to thank you three for covering for the board meeting on Monday night after all of that.
It was so lengthy.
It was, it was.
You couldn't, you, you almost could have missed it if you had been a minute late.
Well, I told you, I called her in apologies for not making it. I said, "I fucking interrupted." Like, two minutes after six, and we were already going, walking out the door by then, so.
No, that was no problem.
It went fairly rightly.
I figured it would, but I felt bad for not. And we're just setting a time for this, so we don't have to wait till nine. We could do the.
We can do it.
This isn't a public hearing.
Not a public hearing, but.
In case somebody wants to come running through the door in one of the certain times.
Argue the time, I don't know. Okay.
What are we looking for, uh, morning? Where have we got it?
Well.
Set this up to any certain time?
The notice of the max levy part will be the twenty-second of March, nine AM.
Twenty-second of March.
Yeah, at the top of the second page, I copy.
So essentially, we're just verifying March twenty-second at nine.
Nine ten.
At nine ten.
Okay, I, Randy, have two separate motions, though.
Well, I would admit, then if that's the way that, that reads, uh, I would say we set the public hearing date on intent to levy general basic property tax rate, which exceeds statute or maximum for March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, at nine AM. on intent to levy general basic property tax rate which exceeds statutory maximum four, March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, at nine AM. One motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Second by Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second one, three, two motions. I would also say March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, at nine-ten would be the public hearing date for the Humboldt County budget.
I have a second from Sandy, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we got those two items out of the way. Ben, would you like to...
And magically, Ben showed us a vote.
Yeah, right. Still, thanks a lot, but...
You got ESPN or something?
Right. Who did it? Uh, the one item that I've got on the agenda is to approve a quote from Fort Dodge Asphalt to do some sullery leveling similar to what they did last year. This would be on P sixty-three or State Avenue from Highway Three North to where it runs on the two twenty-six. About five mile stretch. And, uh, C twenty from P sixty-six east to Highway seventeen. A four mile stretch, I think they call it Vernon School Road.
Okay.
Uh, we have quotes. We've gotten quotes from Fort Dodge Asphalt and, uh, Danko, who we've worked with in the past. Fort Dodge Asphalt is the more competitive quote. You can see I highlighted, uh, two of, of the items on the quote. The remainder is options for C twenty north and west opposed, which we can talk about in the work session.
So I'm trying to, will either these involve a town? If they give us a, say, a couple of weeks, they could move incoming, but they involve going through a town? Either we stop in country stretches?
These are just country stretches.
So we don't have to worry about notifying somebody that...
And they're good at doing one lane at a time. They have their own flaggers set up. They do, they move in mile stretches.
Oh, they do. Is that what they do?
They blow the air, or clean the crack out and... And then they, they have their, uh, security box, basically, it's a three-foot wide trench that they go over all the depressions to make the roads act smoother.
A little smoother.
Yeah.
So it's ready to walk with folks? It'll just be one-way traffic?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be temporary construction as they're moving along.
Okay.
Then they let it dry, and by the time they get to move to the other end, they're pretty much ready to move.
Just those two highlighted.
Just those two.
The other one is discussion to kind of figure out that versus what you got already here.
Right. I, I, I put it on, uh, a spreadsheet for the work session according to options.
We could figure something out and get that done this year as well.
Right.
So...
That's my goal.
Is this...
Does he find out in what direction, what, what matters?
Right. Uh, and that's part of the work session. And in my opinion, the best thing for the buck for north of both would be an inch and a half overlay with the contractor that we have, a contract to do our HMA this year.
Would that be these?
Not these guys.
No, but that would be, that's this type of, uh, scenario.
Right.
Okay. But for now, the sullery leveling two highlighted, that's a good deal there.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get, the post or...
That's, yeah, that's your agenda item.
Yes.
So having figured all that out, I would, uh, make a motion to approve the quote from Fort Dodge Asphalt for the sullery leveling on the P sixty-three and then a C twenty, correct? It's a C twenty-six, is it?
Yep.
Oh, no, C twenty and P sixty-three, yes.
Cross second.
The first and second. Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So Ben, is that Fort Dodge Asphalt, is that still what they're going by versus whatever the...
They're just, uh, yeah, they're just an area of map, they're still going by Fort Dodge Asphalt.
Okay. Now, what's the company that purchased them?
Mackey.
Yeah.
They do work all over the state.
Where, where's their headquarters?
Uh...
Wisconsin.
Wisconsin.
Like Alabfa or...
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
All right. How about the board? Do you guys have any other things to talk about if you're gonna, are you done with that?
I'm, I'm done with that work session.
Okay. Any other items that we need to discuss?
We just have the drainage at nine fifteen.
Okay.
Our, uh, our boring contractor for the hefty tile project is planning on moving in on Wednesday. He called this morning with the nice weather, uh, coming this week. He figures he should be done by Friday.
Okay.
So that's immediately, um, we've got an invoice from Harold Trapp for his boring that he did last fall. That'll most likely get paid in the next claims. Trying to think what else. I know it's been a busy morning.
Yeah. Yeah.
So just what you wanted to get was the text from me that said we were, we're running ahead a little early?
Yeah, I was, I was spinning when you, uh, when you sent that text.
Imagine you can have the guys maybe outrunning the blades here.
Yeah, yeah. The, the roads are turning nice. Uh, the guys have all been instructed to hit their roads with blades. They're putting together their rock maps right now. Um, then building stockpiles, we're pretty much complete with the stockpile in Hardy. We shifted on Friday to start, uh, hauling it to Bode. Uh, we'll continue doing that. Cleaning up a few work orders like, uh, tree debris. Um, I think the guys are up at, uh, Denny Williams', this morning. There's a tree in his right-of-way that's, or in our right-of-way by his house that's dead that he'd like us to remove. So we're cutting that down, and then we're going up, uh, Vernon Seamen's Road, Elk Run, I think they call it. Cleaning up trees in the right-of-way through there today, so.
Nice weather.
Yeah, yeah. Very fortunate considering it's March first.
Yeah.
Crap we had a week ago. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's not over. March has always got one or two...
Yeah, it does.
It's always closer when you, my wife said, "Do they..." Do you realize that, um, daylight saving time starts? I said, "Do you realize we have to get the daylight saving time in order to get to spring?" I'm ready for it. I'll get it tomorrow.
Spoil us.
Yeah.
Well, that way, you'll just, uh, because of the time change, you can, uh, see it.
You can work later, Dave.
It's gonna happen.
That's what I'm hoping. You just work later.
Yep.
Thursday, we can deliver our first dump drop.
I think I know it, okay.
The next one should be, be about a week and a half from now, so.
Because the reason one was going to the east end, did that one trade it off, or is that what they're gonna get?
That's probably the one they got traded off.
Do they drive it over, and then they drive our use on back, or do we have to bring it over and drive it home?
Nope. They, they bring over the new one, uh, and then they take the old one back with them. We've got one down at, uh, International Transmission, um, down in Des Moines. Getting a little bit of work done to it. Sixty-two is still torn apart down in Fort Dodge, our, uh, motor grader. The other ways. Lot of repair bills right now.
Is that the one we didn't get this message from saying?
That's, that's the one that the crankshaft basically, the entire motor, uh...
That's a secondary one, right?
Yes.
So it's winter plow or winter?
Unlimited cost for that or, uh...
Chucked up here.
Chucked up. Parts for everything would be about twenty-one thousand. By the time we do labor and everything else, he figured we'd be pushing close to thirty. We put a new transmission in that, uh, back in eighteen. So basically, that's a brand-new machine with zero hours on it when, when they're done putting it back together, so.
So we don't carry the warranty.
Yeah, it's got a one-year warranty.
Got a one-year warranty.
Fifteen fifty, fifty feet, fifty seconds.
Yeah.
Well, I guess we wait for Webster to call, or we call into them?
Should we just take a five-minute recess? I fold, everybody.
Take a fore, because we'll have to call them.
Messages.
Check him.
Message.